Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. And please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. First, we have agenda items for action, and we don't have any. So moving on to non-agenda items for action. First, we have a blue card from Ms. Chris Cipperly and Jane Maza regarding saying thank you and hello.
Okay. And I would like to remind everyone, because I do see that we do have a number of blue cards, that the time limit is three minutes to speaks, and that's in order to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak and be heard. Thank you.
Good evening, President Petlicov, Superintendent Maleko, and Board of Trustees. I am here to thank you for your collaboration with the union over the last 10 years. It is now time for me to pass on the baton and start a new adventure, but I truly appreciated your willingness to be solution-based, especially during these very challenging times in public education. Thank you again, and I would like to introduce you to the new president of the DFT, Jane Maza.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko and President Petlicov, and the school board. Actually, Chris took most of what I wanted to say, except that I want to thank Chris for her outstanding leadership for the last years and her commitment to not only our district, but also our community. I hope to continue working as well as we have as a nice team. And I'd like to say that in Dearborn, I know we consider students our number-one priority. And to make sure our students have a strong learning environment, we need to make sure our union is strong and that our teachers and support staff are well taken care of in all their endeavors. And again, I look forward to working with all of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congrats, Jane and Chris. Thank you for your service on behalf of all of us. The next blue card, there were two, so I believe they covered this one as well. Next blue card we have is from Ms. Rayanne Barracat, and she wishes to speak to the board about my future in Dearborn schools. Now we can see her good.
I think that Mr. Baydo has to stay because he taught me how to do shows and how to do the thriller. He's amazing at doing shows, and I love how he does everything for us.
All right. Thank you.
I would just like to remind everyone that we really cannot state the names of students or employees. If you could find a way to word your message in order to preserve the privacy of everyone involved.
All right. Mrs. Nicole Barracat, and I'm not sure if that was...
The mother?
The mother of... Yep.
So I get my own question.
It might not be as good as your daughter's.
I don't think so. Stout Theater started from a handful of kids and has grown to close to 100. There was no money, no budget. All the time and money to get it off the ground was donated by our director. How many teachers do you know have been willing to donate their own tax return to fund a dream of students? How many will come in at 7:00 AM and stay till 11:00 PM to prep sets, costumes, fix sound systems, and lights, all unpaid? STC is not just an after-school activity, it's a family, as you can see here tonight from our group that has showed up. A family is not complete with all of its members. Parents come together as a co-op to make this work. Parents run budgeting, costume sets, concessions, all to further a dream for their children. We see the confidence our director brings out in the kids and his love of theater. Let me make this as clear as possible. Our director and his associate are required in order for STC to exist. In the past, to put on our annual spring musicals, students would already be practicing, and the production team would have already met several times. This is why action must be taken now. Stout Theater was awarded by Debbie Dingell April 12, 2017, and is part of the Congressional Records in our Nationals Congress. All five of my children participate in STC. Being PTA president at Stout, I'm in the school a lot during the day. Being a drama mama, I'm there a lot in the evening.
This is his return.
I know our director's resignation was not something he would do of his own accord. I know where the threats to STC and our director are coming from. I've heard and seen them for myself, along with numerous other parents. I've seen him verbally attacked in a half-full hallway of parents by multiple staff members, all while keeping his composure and remaining respectful. Coincidentally, it was members of the music department behaving inappropriately over reserving rooms and seats. I've heard a staff member brag about their own accomplishments and admit to being jealous of our director because he doesn't hold music degrees, yet he still manages to pull out. Amazing talents and vocals for these kids. We are here this evening not to deliver a message to Mr. Oakar, principal. He already knows how we feel and has been very supportive of our program. We are here to let you, the elected officials of our school board, know of the ongoing problems that continue to plague our program. The disruptions are a constant distraction, and we can only assume that they will be controversy after each show. We are the definition of One Dearborn and Students First. The success of our theater group is directly rated to the countless hours and sacrifices made by parents, students, and staff members who believe in having a safe place for students to express themselves. This evening, you'll hear their testimonies and why there are those who have made the attempts to break the spirit of our theater family. All they really did was unify and strengthen our resolve. Let me make something very clear. We don't need lip service, we need your commitment. We need support, and not just that of a blog post or a social media post saying you support STC and our students. A recent post was made indicating that our director is happy to return to theater. It is not obvious the timing of this blog post. The same rhetoric remains, that this is our director's decision. But anyone who has even had a two-minute conversation with him knows better than that what is really the issue. How will you ensure our director and his associate get the respect and admiration they deserve by administration here in ASC? Because our principal continues to be supportive. Lastly, don't be fooled by tonight's gala briefing. We are active in our respected communities and never forget those who stood up and did the right thing and those who stood idly by. You are elected to represent our voices, which is why I'm reminding you to hold your end. Thank you.
Before we continue on, there's something that I want to say on behalf of the board first. It's clear that you, I'm hoping, have all read the blog and understand that the Stout Theater Group will continue as is and has been in the past, and that the board is committed to preserving the program and providing the same kind of support and excellence that you have enjoyed in the past. We can't speak on individual personnel issues, and we can't comment on the reasons why people have done or not done things in the past, but we will tell you that as a board, we have no interest other than serving the school community and in providing the best possible experience for everyone involved. And I want to make sure that you understand that we've heard your voices, we've responded as well as we could during the circumstances, and that we can't give any more response than that at this time. So I do want to make sure that you understand that the program will continue on as you have seen it in the past. Ms. Azzi?
Thank you, President and Trustee. I just wanted to go on record, in that three minutes I heard threats were made, and I just want to reiterate that if anyone in Dearborn Public Schools feels threatened at any time, that I would ask that they report it to Human Resources so that it could be dealt with and addressed directly. We do want everyone to feel safe at all times at Dearborn Schools. So I just wanted to respond to that piece.
Okay, thank you.
I have my business cards here.
Can I also just mention on that is that the protocol too is there's different outlets, so it could be the building principal if there were issues, and it's got to be a timely with specific information, and we always follow through and investigate those issues. And that's why I think you talked about the compliance officers too, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, continue on.
Ms. Shania Duncan would like to speak to the board about her complete education opportunities.
My name is Shania Duncan, and I go to Stout Middle School. After coming to Stout, I found out about the Stout Theater Company. The theater helped me to be more active in school. I knew that I could sing and play piano, but the director helped me to be unafraid of people. I met a lot of new people, and the older ones helped me to fit in. I was told that in sixth grade that I might have to wait on a chance to play piano, but then the director asked me what I can do on stage besides actor dance. I told him that I could play piano. After that, I was given a spot in my first really big stage performance. Thank you.
All right. Next card we have from Mr. Ronald Duncan, and he'd like to speak to us about his daughter's academic opportunities, and he wants her to be able to transition from middle school into high school.
Thank you very much, and good evening.
Good evening.
I am honored to be able to stand before you this evening to give my insight about my experience while at Stout Middle School. I have been in Dearborn for the last 10 years. My daughter has come up through kindergarten, all of elementary, and now she's entered into Stout Middle School. And she's a very talented person, and I had an opportunity to observe what Stout was doing prior to her getting there. And I just want to make a statement regarding the experience that I've had there. If I can pull up my information, my daughter does a little bit better job than I do.
Well, would you like us, would you like to take a seat and look for it, and we'll call up the next person, then you can come back to the podium?
Sure, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Let's keep that card so we can call Mr. Duncan right after. Next, we have Ms. Caitlin Bell, who wants to speak to the board about her experiences at Stout Middle School. Good evening.
My name is Caitlin Bell. I am the president of Stout Theater Company. I'm in eighth grade, and when I first came to Stout, I was a shy girl, the one that liked to sit in the back of the classroom whenever was possible. I never wanted to talk out. If the teacher called my name in class to give an answer, I shut down, basically. I barely could talk privately to my teachers. And to be standing here in front of the school board, speaking to you guys in front of a room full of people, to me, I feel like that's an accomplishment to me. And I remember my fifth-grade year, the same room. I was in a chess tournament for Snow Elementary School, sorry. And I remember being very nervous. And today, I am very nervous still. That's something that never really goes away. But at my years, my past few years at Stout and my experiences with Stout Theater Company, I have learned to build my confidence and to learn to be able to talk in front of people that I don't know, that I don't know what they're going to think of me. But I have learned to not care, to do me, that I am who I am meant to be. And without Stout Theater Company, I feel like I probably would have failed a couple projects. It sounds pretty major, but one of our, a couple of projects in seventh grade were a lot, based a lot of how we presented. And because of theater, I have learned to make eye contact with my audience. I have learned to be able to project, to breathe when necessary. And I'm very thankful for my journey in Stout Theater Company and the friends I have made because of Stout Theater Company. Stout Theater Company, despite its name, is not a company. It is not a community. It is not a mere extracurricular activity. We are a family. Thank you.
Good evening again.
Go ahead and follow that.
Mr. Duncan returns.
I just want to say that when I came to Stout with my child in sixth grade, she asked me if she could take part in STC. As I watched her, I saw my child blossom into a great, complete student, but my expectations were low. However, over time, I saw the director bring her out like no one else could. As well, I saw students, parents, and a community come together. They say it takes a village. We used to joke we were a few villagers short. That ended November 2019. The performance of The Greatest Showcase at Stout Auditorium was filled to capacity with our community and perhaps 100-plus performers, great young people who performed miraculously became an extended family. We want to say how humble, how honored, and how grateful we both are. Our Stout Theater students really rose to the occasion. Don't ever destroy the fruit by cutting down the tree. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Lola Rose Song, who wishes to speak to the board about her journey with Stout.
Hello, my name is Lola Rose Song, and it's an honor to be able to speak on behalf of my director. He's an excellent director and amazing person and lights up the room when he walks in. He welcomes anyone to Stout Theater Company. He also welcomes experienced and inexperienced actors and actresses. He pushes us to work hard and do our best. I've been with my director for three years, and all the years have been one of the most happiest, most fun and educating moments of my life. I've always had a passion for acting and being on stage, but once I met my director, he made me want to feel more dedicated to acting and dancing. I've previously acted in my director's summer program, and with his encouragement, I joined Stout Theater Company, which feels more like a family. But right now, without him, it feels like a piece of our family is missing. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Nadia Jelani, who's going to speak about how Stout Theater affected her.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nadia Jelani, and I'm a freshman at Dearborn High School, and I went to Stout my sixth through eighth grade year, and I was a part of the Stout Theater Company, seventh through eighth. I walked into my sixth-grade year of middle school, and by the end of it, I managed to barely pass, and I had zero confidence. My seventh-grade year, I made a promise to myself that I would join theater. I started my first show, and the experience was everything and more I could have imagined. By the end of the production, my confidence was beyond all measures, and I had friends, and my grades never looked better because our director always said this one thing, students first. A saying that sticks with me because I do theater at DHS. I learned so much with one production, and I continue to go on with many, many shows in the upcoming years with our director. I learned so many, so much about theater, and absolutely learned a lot about myself as well. Theater has been such an amazing impact in my life, and I know it has been to many other kids like me across the district. All the people here in this audience are here because the director has touched their lives in some way. I feel amazingly grateful to know that I had the opportunity to step on that stage and do what I always dreamed of doing all my life, which was to perform. Stout Theater will forever be a refuge for me and many other friends who now I call my family. A place where everyone can be themselves without being judged, but by being loved, to be who they truly are from 3:15 to 5:00 PM every Theater Tuesday and Thursday. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Nadine Seklawi, who would also like to speak about Stout Theater.
Greetings, board members and Superintendent Maleko. I'm Nadine Seklawi, a sixth grader at STEM and an actor in the Stout Theater Company. I would like to start off sharing that I feel it is unfair to be treated with uncertainty, believing I've lost something so close to me. I'd like to add, it is appalling that someone doing such good for our community was pushed to a point where he had to resign. Theater taught me so many things that are important as I grow. Theater taught me friendship and responsibility through simple things like my fellow actors and props. It also taught me respect, respect for the theater itself, respect for the tech crew, and respect for our giving, hard-working, loving, and what I'd like to call our director. Every day, our director would tell us, "Not a middle school show." He didn't believe in labels. Just because we were called a middle school didn't mean we can't go above and beyond. Most importantly, theater taught me how to send my message, to tell my story. I wouldn't be up here if it weren't for our director. He is one of the most amazing people I know. However, if there is one thing I know, he will never resign from his astonishing traits. I would like to ask for your support for our director and Stout Theater Company with not only your actions, but your words and your kindness. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Nadine Seklawi, who'd also like to talk about the honorable things theater has taught her. And is... No?
That was the name. Nadine or the top?
Oh, then...
Nadine.
Then we switch the cards. Nadine?
She'll pass.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Charlotte Monroe, who likes to speak to the board about benefits of theater.
Hello, my name is Charlotte. I am nine years old, and I am in third grade. When I first started Stout Theater Company, I suffered from bad anxiety. I still have some problems with it, but this past year, working with my director and his amazing program, my anxiety has greatly improved. Friends, family, my doctor, and teachers have all noticed how far I've come in just a short year. There are other kids with stories just like mine that Stout Theater Company to thank for the wonderful transformations to their lives. I know I'm just a kid, but I hope you really take to heart how much we all need your support, all need your support, and how much our director needs your support so we can continue to grow with, grow and thrive in the safe environment that he has provided. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Nicole McLean, who'd like to speak to the board about Stout Theater.
Hi, my name is Nicole McLean, and I'm a sophomore at Etzel Ford. I joined Stout Theater when I was in seventh grade, and right then, I wished I had joined earlier because I love that program for many reasons. One of my biggest reasons is that it's a safe and fun environment for everyone. I was, and I still am, a very shy and quiet person, but during my time in Stout Theater, I met lots of great people, I made new friends, and I learned to open up a bit. Theater for me was also like an escape, and I know many other people thought that too. For example, if you had a bad day at school, or there's a teacher you hate, or there was drama between you and your friends, when you step into the auditorium, you are able to leave those problems outside because our director does his best to create a safe, drama-free zone where all the kids can get along and work together. And anyone who knows our director knows that he would never just quit. I owe so much to our director because he always makes me feel welcome whenever I come visit Stout, and I know that I will always be a part of Stout Theater. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Yasmeen Kake.
My name is Yasmeen Kake. I'm a sixth grader at Bryan Middle School, and I do theater at Stout. The director's theater programs have had a big impact on me. Despite only being in a few of his shows, I've learned to become a better actor, singer, and be more energetic and less shy when being on stage. I've also got to know him and what an amazing person he is. The director is funny, energetic, so very hard-working, so talented, and so caring. I'm so glad I got to meet him and do theater with him. Before doing theater at Stout, I was shy, quiet, and stiff when being on stage. Then, he taught me to loosen up and be more energetic and act as if the whole room were empty. The main thing I love about the director, and will never forget about him, is how he always kept pushing me until I was perfect. Even when I thought I was perfect, he would keep giving me advice on how to do better. He is an amazing mentor that I will always remember, and he always found a way to comfort any of his students if they were having any sort of difficulty. I strongly believe that every kid should be able to experience doing a production with this director at Stout because he has had such a big impact on so many kids.
Next, we have Ms. Natalia Hesse. Next, we have Ms. Natalia Hesse.
Hi. My name is Leila Salha, and I joined Theater STC three years ago as a third grader. I'm now currently a sixth grader. My first show was Aladdin, and I saw theater was just saying lines, singing, and dancing. But our director taught us that it was more than that. He taught us that it was a passion. Throughout these years, our director has taught us many things, like having courage to be confident, and that everybody makes mistakes. With this advice, he has helped me and he has helped Natalia and I throughout our years in STC.
Hi. My name is Natalia Hesse, and in addition to that, me and Leila would not be having the courage to come up here and use our projecting voice to speak to all you awesome supporters. STC is not just any theater company. STC is more than that. STC is creativity, inspiring, and thinking outside the box. But what is really STC? It is family. Mr. Baydun said a goal, and his goal was to inspire many kids, and he did reach his goal, and is still attending to reach his goal. Our director inspired me, and he inspires me or gives me advice with something new every day, and that is why I am so thankful to have someone so bright and inspiring in my life.
Hang on, just... We didn't get it. Could the young lady, could the young lady in the purple, because you came up with the person who we announced, Natalia, we just need your name for the record, okay? Could you just give us your name again? So that we make sure that we record you too.
Leila Salha.
Okay. Leila?
Yeah. L-A-Y.
Leila, let me write your name. Did you fill out a card, Leila? No, okay. Put you on with Natalia.
L? L-A-Y-L-A.
Okay, thank you.
Salha, S-A-L-A-H-A.
S-A-L-A-H-A.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Ms. Maram Al-Sagir.
Good evening. My name is Maram Al-Sagir, and I go to STEM Middle School. Stout Theater Company meant a lot to me. It was the biggest thing I looked forward to every day. I was just in fourth grade when I started STC. It helped me become the person I am today. I gained all my confidence from there. I let out a talent that I never even knew was in me. Little did I know, when I first walked into the theater at Stout Middle School, that it would be my new home. I learned that a home can't truly be a home without the people that mean the most to you, and for me, those were the most talented actors and actresses I've ever seen. They are my family that taught me lessons that I use on a daily basis, but I won't ever be able to see these amazing people without STC. People may think that theater is just an after-school activity, but it is actually a huge priority when it comes to me and many others. Without STC, students will never be able to let out a talent that can change their life in the future. I looked forward to Tuesday and Thursday just to go to theater. It was one of the only things that motivated me to do the things I do today. Most importantly, Stout Theater Company is that even if you can't sing or dance or act, your role that may be the smallest is still what keeps the show together. Students all around the district come to STC and make the biggest impact in the show, but no shows or messages will ever be spread in the city without STC. Finally, I wanted to say that the director made my entire experience at theater even better than it actually was. He showed me that even at the worst of times, you have to keep your chin up high. Even if everyone is doing the complete opposite of what you're supposed to be doing, you still go on that stage and show them that you know what you're doing is a passion that can never be broken. The motto at STC is, "What role will you play?" Imagine a world where no roles can be played, where no one can let out a passion that can mean the most to them.
Next, we have Ms. Ann Weekly, who would wish to speak to the board. She's a concerned grandparent regarding harassment and letting go of theater instructor. Is Ms. Weekly here?
She's passed.
Okay, she passed.
Oh, she passed, okay. Next, we have Mr. Hila Al-Bazee, who would like to speak to the board about Dearborn Public Schools.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hila Al-Bazee. I just graduated Fortson High School last year. In high school, I had the privilege to photograph, tutor, and collaborate with the students at Stout Theater Company. Working with the director and advisors of Stout Theater Company and the passionate thespians at Stout was one of the most rewarding experiences of my high school career. I was able to watch a group of grassroots students, faculty, and community members under the leadership of all the parents, the director, and the advisors grow Stout Theater Company into such an amazing theater program for students in and outside different public schools. Stout Theater Company was not just a theater organization. It served as a community organization and family for talented artists who were able to express themselves, all at no cost to the students. I worked with STC as a current Brown Scholar at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor to tutor the students on a daily basis, to ensure that they're able to balance their passion for theater and their commitment to their academics. I professionally photographed all of the shows and the students because we wanted all the kids that professional photographs so they can develop their theater profile and resumes. I worked with STC's student leadership to create educational pamphlets regarding the history and storyline of their shows. I did all of this because I knew the value of community. I knew how invested the parents, the faculty, the staff, the directors, and advisors were to Stout Theater Company. I was committed to helping the director in his mission to empower, inspire, and develop all the students at STC to become better actors, leaders, and students on and off the stage. STC is one of the only things that I witnessed across this whole district that represents all corners of our city. If there's one thing that I learned from the years of mentorship under the director who I've known for much of my high school career is that he doesn't leave his students hanging, and that's just the one message I want to leave with the board, and please, that's just the one thing that I really want to emphasize here today. So, thank you so much.
We have Ms. Hibba Daggar, who wishes to speak to the board about the future of the theater in Dearborn schools.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Maleko. I am a former student of Dearborn Public Schools, and I recently graduated from Fortson, and I just wanted to tell you all about my first experience with STC was attending the Spring Show Aladdin Junior. This is in my junior year of high school, and I mark that day as one that has greatly impacted my life. At Fortson High School, I served as a president of the Performing Arts Club, and at the time, I was incredibly demotivated by the uphill battle that was trying to put on shows and performances with little to no resources and at a school that, in my admittedly biased opinion, didn't really place much value in the arts as it did other extracurriculars. Watching Aladdin Junior, I remembered why I loved the theater so much, because it brought the people together. There, in that Stout Auditorium, watching kids from all backgrounds, ethnicities, religions, neighborhoods, and families perform and show the world the fruits of their labor made my heart swell with pride. I was completely overcome with emotion that by intermission, I was practically sobbing in my seat. I had never expected to see kids, especially kids that looked like me, to have the opportunity to put on a show like this. STC took Aladdin, a musical that was riddled with negative stereotypes and representations about Arabs and Middle Eastern people, and turned it into a celebration of love, family, embracing who we are fearlessly and unapologetically. In the three years that I've known the STC director, I have never met anyone else who was so dedicated to the success of their students. The STC director has never quit on a kid, ever. He pushes and pushes us to succeed. His initiatives for making sure that all of his students are thriving both onstage in the classroom to theater with a purpose, which follows the idea that we have to remain conscious about real-world issues both outside the auditorium, are proof as to why kids that are a product of STC are always among our leaders in Dearborn Public Schools. We, as a district, are constantly touting the catchphrase "One Dearborn." And if you want the perfect example of One Dearborn, all you have to do is attend an STC meeting. There, you will see students from all four corners of Dearborn laughing, learning, and becoming future leaders of Dearborn right before our eyes. No one has put in the time, effort, creativity, love, blood, sweat, and tears into putting together a space that allows everyone to be creative that the STC director has and continues to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Amina Barakat, regarding extracurriculars.
I am here today because my director had to leave, and I know that he would never leave us. We were getting ready to do High School Musical Junior. This show is perfect for STC because we're all in this together is who we really are. Before, I was very shy, like I was hiding in a shell, and theater brought me out of that shell. Theater and the support of my director is why I'm able to speak to you tonight. Today, I'm not old enough to vote, but someday, I will be. In the next seven years, I will work hard to make sure your seats are filled with honest, just people. I'm counting on you to be those honest, just people. My director needs to come back. Theater won't be any fun without him. He sees the strengths in us before we even see it ourselves. Please do what's right. Thank you.
I just want to again make it clear that your director is back. Yes. He agreed on his, it was his decision to leave, and it was his decision to return. He is a volunteer. He has accepted the position again. He is back as your... I'm not going to debate, that's a personnel issue that I can't debate. I'm letting you know that your director is returning to the program. All right. Next, we have Ms. Aya Barakat about after-school activities.
Good evening. My name is Aya Barakat. STC is not only a regular theater company, but a family, and we stick together, and I think that's why we're all here. He is our family, and that is why we want him back. He would never, with heart and soul, leave theater, even if he was getting a root canal taken. He would still be directing and inspiring us from the sidelines. You, as our elected reps, need to fix this. He inspired me to do things I never thought I would do on my own. High school next year, I plan on joining ASU and campaigning for candidates that stand for justice. I hope you do too.
Next, we have Ms. Grace Mercury, who wishes to speak to the board about district after-school activities.
Hello, and good evening to the school board council members, as well as my fellow students, teachers, and those who have simply come to let their voice be heard. My name is Grace Mercury, and I am currently a junior at Etzel Ford High. Today is a very important day for me, as most likely it is for all of you as well. But the reason that today is so crucial to me is because I can freely discuss my home, STC, as well as my friend and director. Times in the past when I have tried to share my feelings toward this subject, I was too scared to speak due to a fear that my opinion would only cause backlash from those trying to put us down. My director, to me, has been a large piece in my life ever since I entered Stout Middle School all those years ago. Through this pure passion and drive for creating a whole new meaning to student-led acting, he has impacted countless lives in ways many of you could not even fathom. He has not only impacted students from all around the districts, but the parents and those who come to see each show he has put on thus far. As for now, how he's impacted me, it's simple. My director has kept his hope in me and brought me out of my shell. As hard-headed, stubborn, and lazy as I can be, both him and those a part of Stout Theater Company were always there to shine a light through the fogs of depression and anxiety that always seemed to shroud me. To elaborate more about some of the hardships both my director and this wonderful program has helped me through, I would like to go back to here, to the year Stout Theater Company was founded. During that time, I was an outcast. Even among the oddballs, I was odd. Nobody wanted to hang out with a nerd, right? Nobody wanted to even try to put their hope in a fat girl with purple riffs of hair and combat boots. Nobody wanted to deal with the baggage of her growing depression and anxiety. Nobody wanted to look at the constant cuts covering her arm. They were simply adding to how ugly she was. But, one person. One person bringing her into a group of those similar paths, those with a similar passion theater, is all it took to show that girl that it was okay to be an outcast. It was okay to be bubbly and extroverted. It was okay to look and act different than others. It was okay. That girl was, and still is, me, and that one person was my director. If I didn't know that I had a home to go back to at school who loved and appreciated me and knew that I had people who believed in my talent, those many days I have thought about leaving my life behind would have become a reality. This program and this teacher has saved my life and many others by simply being compassionate and patient. For that, I will be forever grateful. Now, after saying this, leads me to the joys of being a part of the STC, a star of a still blossoming theater community throughout Dearborn. As a founding member of this family of students, I ask you to look back to the years before my director had the idea of student-led theater. What was there for elementary and middle schools? Sure, many schools had an occasional play or musical, but for schools to have a chance to show their students theatrical talent altogether? Unheard of. Now, look at what Stout Theater Company has started. It has made a lifelong friendships, connected schools, created a safe space for everyone with a passion for theater, and given students who wish to pursue acting, tech, and crew quite a lot of experience. Personally, I wouldn't trade my time with those in STC for anything. This is my family, my friends, and my home. I'm sure I could also speak for others when I say that I am not the only one who believes this to be true. Let us keep this family together and remember to include the man who made it all possible. Remember that those in other music departments who tried to put us down needed to be reminded of this. All good things must come to an end, but it isn't time for this program to do so. No matter what, we will continue to stand together, and we stand by our loving director and mentor. Thank you for your time.